Good evening and welcome to today's forum from the Chesapeake Council of the Women's Division. My name is Lisa Dixon. I'm the President of the Women's Division of Hampton Roads Chamber of Commerce. Tonight, we welcome you to participate in a significant event that will shape our community. Again, thank you for those that are listening and those that are present. I will be calling Tanya Gill to the podium and she will explain the rules and the processes for tonight. As well, before we get started, I would like for us to have Dr. Ward to stand. She was the Chair of our committee this year. Thank you, Dr. Ward. And Tanya will now come and go over those rules with each candidate. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to tonight's forum. We are happy that you've joined us and we look forward to hearing from all of you. Before we begin, I would like to share that our organization is a nonprofit, nonpartisan organization. So now, let's talk about the format for tonight. Each candidate will have two minutes to give introductory remarks. Candidates will be called in alphabetical order. You will come up and take three questions from the fishbowl. You will hand those questions to one of our members and then those questions will be asked by three of our members that are with us tonight. And they are Shelley Wood, Ann Myers, and Lisa Carey. Thank you. We ask that you adhere to our time limit. And so, to help you do that, we have a timekeeper, Ms. Kimberly Hobbs, in the back of the room. And when she puts up a yellow paper, that means you have 30 seconds. She puts up a red paper, that means you have 15. And when you hear the sound of the bell, that means you need to wrap it up. We do ask that everyone silence all of your devices out of respect for all of the candidates tonight. I would also like to, at this time, introduce to you Lisa Carey, who will now call up our candidates to begin our forum. Lisa?
Thank you. At this time, I call Sam L. Boone Jr. to select a question and come to the podium for an opening statement.
Well, good evening to everyone. And first, I want to thank the Women's Division of the Chamber of Commerce. I want to thank the candidates for sacrificing their time to be here because it takes so much and your families go through so much. So I'm really grateful I've got a chance to really meet so many of them. Wishing everyone well. And at last, I want to give an honest to God for allowing me to be here today. Well, good evening. My name is Sam Boone. I'm a candidate for running for reelection. I was first elected to the school board in 2012. I was reelected in 2016 and then 2020. I've really been honored to serve on the school board. How I got started on this mission was as a former state trooper, I was doing so much work with at-risk kids and visiting schools throughout the state. One of my fellow troopers said, "Have you ever thought about running for school board?" So that's how this whole mission got started. So I started and ran in 2010. I lost and then I just continued and I've really enjoyed my time. I've lived in Chesapeake for over 20 years. I have twin boys who graduated from Grassville High School. My wife is a teacher, a reading specialist at Princess Elementary, and she's at work right now. So I understand what a teacher goes through and when I leave here, I'm going to pick her up this evening. So my wife is a reading specialist. I retired after 25 years of the state police. I was a recruiter and background investigator and I was appointed by the governor two years ago to serve on the parole board. So that is my day job now. So I have a very busy schedule, but my passion is about helping our children out. And I realize the connection between our prison system and working with kids. There's so much relationship keeping them on the right track. So I'm very passionate about serving. I've been doing it and I really, I'm proud of my record. I know we've gone through some difficult times over the years, but I'm really proud of my record and I'm here to serve. I'm passionate. Not only have I just been a board member, but I've actually been in the classroom, observed instruction, helped teachers out, been a custodian for those. So those are the kind of things you need to do just to serve from the outside, but actually being a part of the school system. So thank you.
Mr. Boone, for your first question. How would you, as a school board member, act to buffer the negative effects of federal or state laws that would harm our students or impede our ability to educate them?
That is a great question and a difficult question. We need to do the best we can is to keep politics out of the classroom. Many people who are making these decisions on the state and on a national level have really never spent time in the classroom. And I would make a suggestion to many people who are making these types of decisions and maybe step foot in the class for maybe one day or half a day just to see what's going on and feel what teachers are going through before they make decisions on what's going to affect them. Because right now, teachers are going through some very difficult times.
Your second question. What do you see as the role of technology in education?
Technology is so important and technology. And Chesapeake Public Schools has been a leader in technology. Right now, we just, I believe recently, we increased the amount of data that can go across the school system, which is very huge. And also, they have now a student management system who can assist the students during class time to help them out the hours, being able to do work at home. So technology is very important and I feel like Chesapeake Public Schools is a leader in the administration. They've done a great job with that.
What steps will you take to ensure that students are safe in areas where there are limited supervision? For example, bathrooms, locker rooms, et cetera.
We have a great team right now. We have a security task force that's doing an awesome job. And every day, we're looking at ways to improve going forward with community support groups, law enforcement, firemen. It takes the eyes of everyone. So just making sure that everyone is paying attention to what's going on. Teachers may be the first ones to see what's going on. It could be a custodian. It could be somebody in the school. But we'll continue to work on and improving it day by day to make sure our kids are safe. That's the most important thing that we have.
At this time, I'd like to invite you for any closing statements.
Great. No more questions. Okay. This last one, that was... Well, I just want to say thank you for this opportunity. I'm not good at this type. This is very hard for me. It's very difficult because, you know, speaking off the top, you don't know the answers to everything, but I really appreciate this opportunity. I hope you will do your research on every single candidate to see who's done what. I really appreciate everybody, but I really feel like I'm very qualified for this position. I've served since 2012. And even people, this is important, people who don't like me, disagree with me, I cherish your opinion. That is very important. We may not always agree on everything, but I value your opinion. That is so important before I make a decision that I understand how other people feel because we all care about, you know, our school system. So that's important. To understand why other people think about how they feel. So just understand that I really do care. I'm passionate about the schools, my life. I mean, if you want to talk to maybe some administrators, teachers, I've dedicated myself to education in these kids. Like I said, I'm just served from the outside. I've been a custodian for a day. I've gone to special education classes and sat through instructions with teachers just so I can get a better understanding of what it's like to be in those shoes each and every day. Most people just don't get it, what teachers deal with every day. My wife is there. She's struggling right now with the Student Literacy Act. That's what she's dealing with now, trying to get across her training to the teachers. I'm telling you, that is very stressful and most people truly don't understand. So that's why it's so important and I encourage anybody who's running to take that time out to learn about, you know, the classroom and what's going on before you actually make a decision. I'm truly grateful for this opportunity. I look forward to a bright future going forward. Us all working together. Thank you so much.
At this time, I'd like to invite Elijah Cologne to select questions and come to the podium for an opening statement.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Elijah Cologne. First and foremost, I want to thank the Women's Division for allowing us to utilize your platform and stand on your shoulders so that we can talk about our platform. I thank you. I also want to thank each and every candidate that stepped up to put their name in the hat. This lets us know that there's people in the community that do care about our future, so I thank you for that. I've lived in the community of Chesapeake for over 17 years with my lovely wife. The platform that I'm running on, safety, number one, that's the first thing that we think about when we send our children off to school. When we put them on the bus, as grandparents, as mothers, aunts, uncles, we want to make sure that they're safe getting there. We also want to make sure that they're safe in the building. It's a non-negotiable, but it's also not a one-size-fits-all. The other thing is prioritizing parents' voices and ensuring that they have a seat at the table continuously. Not something that we just say, but it's something that we do and we actually adhere to it. The other thing in our family, we like to call it the three Es, is we want to make sure that we prepare the pathway ahead for the children and prepare them to deal with the pathway three ways. Either enlist in the military, enroll in college, or employ. And we do that through the Career Center. How we do that is ensuring that we actually let the children know that the career path that they're choosing is okay, but we guide them by giving them advice along the way. Thank you.
As a member of the school board, how would you work with the team to address challenges with shortages and retention of our teachers, bus drivers, and support staff, including custodians and cafeteria workers?
Thank you for the question. It's a great question. I think it's something that we see now across everywhere throughout the state. I think the biggest thing is actually sitting down as a group along with the superintendent and his staff and actually coming up with what areas are crisis areas, so that way we can prioritize first. Just going in without a plan isn't going to lead to success. Most success is done through a routine. If we can sit down and actually plan what areas are a focus and prioritize those areas and then come up with a game plan, I think would be the first step that we would take.
In the past 12 months, how many Chesapeake schools have you visited or attended a school function event?
Well, my daughter's in school, so she's a senior at Oscar Smith High School. So I've attended football games. I've attended band practices. Picking her up is one of the things. I've also been to one of our Title I schools to sit and speak with one of the principals and also help as well with some of the stuff that they had shared that they needed. So that's something that I do frequently do. My mother-in-law is also very passionate within the school system, so I'm alongside her, helping her as well.
Do you believe that teachers should have a greater impact or a voice in district decisions that impact their work and their students? If so, what would you do to support?
I firmly believe that they should have a voice. I think throughout surveys, things of that nature, whether it be forums that we have for teachers where they can speak on certain topics, allow us to give us input, they're the ones that are in the classroom dealing with children every day. So I think their voice does need to be heard. I think in hearing their voice along with guidance from the superintendent and staff, we can come up with a great plan to actually go forward for the student. But yes, their voice is very important.
At this time, I'd like to invite you to make any closing statements.
Yes, ma'am. So as I stated earlier, I'm a resident of Chesapeake. I was brought here 17 years ago with my lovely wife. Life kind of hits you. I had the opportunity to attend school at Norview High School in Norfolk. From there, I earned a scholarship to play baseball in North Carolina. From there, life happens. Got called home. My mom and dad had a divorce. It was time to come home. So God had a different plan than what I had. My plan was to attend school to become a teacher. Unfortunately, that wasn't what God saw fit. So I choose to follow God's plan at every step of the way because I know his plan is greater than mine. In doing so, I've had the opportunity to volunteer within my daughter's classes from reading, sitting down at lunch tables, just like Sam was mentioning, and being a part of it. That's one of the things that I was able to do. In doing so, I've come to learn that the greatest thing that you can do is be an advocate for the future. And how you do that is by being a light, a beacon of light, a guidance, and also letting your life be an example. And I feel that in doing so, I would like to sit down, be able to have an impact, not only for teachers, but students. Not just one classroom, but a multitude throughout. Thank you. Elijah Cologne.
At this time, I'd like to invite Gregory G. Dono to the podium for an opening statement and to select a question.
Luck of the draw, I guess. Thank you. Good evening. Thank you for inviting us here. I really appreciate it. Again, thank you to all the other candidates that are running. First, I would like to say that Mr. Boone and I did not coordinate our outfits today, so sorry about that. I'm Gregory Dono and I'm running for Chesapeake School Board. I'm a 23-year Marine Corps combat veteran, part of the time active duty, 10 years, and the rest of the time in the reserves. I'm an attorney and I'm also, most importantly, a father of two young children that are in the Chesapeake school system right now. I'm running because I know that our greatest asset is our children, bar none. And we have to do everything that we can to make sure that our children are safe, treated fairly, and have the proper education so they can grow up and be the pillars of our society. I'm also running because I know that right now, there needs to be a change in the status quo in our school board and the mentality of the way that we run things. Chesapeake became a city in 1963 with 78,000 people. We are now, in 2024, and we have a quarter million people in Chesapeake. And we still seem to run things with the same mentality. I'm running to ensure that all our students and our teachers are treated equally, fairly, and with compassion. I want to ensure that our schools don't give in to the social and political pressures that are plaguing the rest of the states and the rest of this country. Our students and staff need to be able to learn in a safe and caring environment. Some of the other things that I'm passionate about are collective bargaining for our teachers and staff, increased mental health resources and mental health training for our students and our teachers and our staff to include such things as Helping Hands. And when we make decisions, like Mr. Cologne was saying, we need to bring in experts and we need to listen to the teachers, the students, the staff, and the parents when we make our decisions. Again, thank you so much for allowing me to be here today. I look forward to your questions.
Your first question is actually broken down into two, but it's the same topic. So I just wanted to give you that heads up as I read this. What is your perception of the current working and learning climate in our school district? And do you have any ideas on how to ensure a positive working and learning climate in our district?
Yeah, so my understanding of the working environment and the learning environment from the children that I've spoken to and the teachers that I've spoken to is that it's not bad, but it could always be better, right? So some of the issues that I've heard about are issues with the SPED program for our children, Special Education Program, and the way that those children are treated within the administration. There's also a lack of training for our teachers and there's also an issue with teachers and their pay and our staff. So right now, we have 150 school bus drivers shortage in Chesapeake. So one of the ways that I think that we improve that is to improve, like I said, mental health resources within the school. That way, if people are having issues, they can come and speak to somebody and make sure that those issues are addressed, or at least heard. I also believe in collective bargaining to make sure that our teachers and staff understand what they're getting into and make sure that they have the highest pay available to them. And then also, just in offering incentives and training for our teachers and staff to ensure that they're happy, healthy, and want to come back to work. Thank you.
Your second question. What are your financial priorities for the school district? Examples: reduction in class size, improved technology in the classroom, maintaining current programs.
So, do I get to choose from those three? So for our funding, my main priority with our funding is to actually get more funding and then make sure that the way our funding is spent is extremely transparent to all the parents and the community. In order to spend that funding, I think some of the priorities are, like everyone's going to get up here and talk about, and I agree with 100% is the safety of our children. If you're not in an environment where you feel safe and cared for and willing to learn, you're not going to learn anything. And the way that I propose to do that is to put more money towards mental health resources to include things like Helping Hands, to get teachers and staff trained, to help train students to make sure that if someone has a problem, they can go to a student or a teacher and talk about that to stop problems before they start. Also, I think our funding needs to go to building more schools and improving our schools because right now, it's unconscionable, I think, that we have children learning out of pods, especially with the safety environment that we're working in today.
Explain your understanding of safety procedures in our schools. Do you think that they are adequate? What changes would you recommend, if any?
So the way that I understand from my children and from visiting some other schools is that, and they've done a really good job about this too, so kudos to our current school board. A lot of the schools, they have one entry point, multiple exit points, right, for fires? But at that entry point, so my kids go to Butts Road Intermediate and when they were at Butts Road Primary, it was the same thing. There was one entry point. You had to ring a bell. Everything was locked down. You walked into the school and you were greeted by security personnel, at which point they took your ID, they kind of vetted you, made sure you were supposed to be there, and at that point, they called in someone to come get you. Especially at the intermediate school, they don't even let you in the school at that point. You're outside. They come and talk to you. And then they go, get the administrator, whoever they need to talk to, and bring them to you. I think that's perfectly fine. I think that's a great policy. The things that we could do better in terms of physical security is maybe like they're implementing in some places, have people walking around the outside of the school to make sure that there's no, you know, outside threats that are looking to come in. But really, I think the most important thing to protect our children, because as we've seen, most of the violence comes from children within the schools, is to prevent it before it happens. And like I'm saying, increasing mental health resources to make sure that those kids that are bullied or feel uncomfortable or sad or feel anger, that's noticed appropriately and quickly to make sure that we can stop it before anything happens.
At this time, I'd like to invite you for any closing statements.
Yeah, thank you. Again, I'm Gregory Dono. I'm running for Chesapeake School Board. If you want to know more about me, you can look at votfordono, F-O-R-E dot com, or I'm sorry, F-O-R, dono dot com. Again, like I said, I think our children are our greatest asset and they need to be protected. And the way to do that is to teach them appropriately. And by doing that, we have to ensure that they are in a safe environment, they're well-fed, and their teachers and staff that are looking out for them and caring for them every day are taken care of as well. Again, I'm Gregory Dono. I'm running for Chesapeake School Board. Thank you so much for your time. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Next, Malia L. Huddle. Please select your questions and come to the podium for an opening statement.
Good evening. I am Malia Huddle. I'm candidate for Chesapeake School Board. Thank you to the Women's Division for the opportunity to be here this evening. And thank you also to the candidates. We've had a good time on the campaign trail. Everyone has been supportive of each other. And I hope that will continue to be the case as we are all elected to different positions. I'm running because I spent 35-plus years in public education. I was a counselor at Oscar Smith for 29 years. Prior to that, I worked at Old Dominion University as an academic advisor and also as an admissions counselor. So I've done everything from recruit students to come to college to being back in high school and seeing what happens when they get ready to move on to that or to some other career field. I'm also the mother of a 2007 Oscar Smith graduate, my son Adam Piper. We were fortunate that he got a wonderful education in the school system. I spent quite a few of those years as a single parent. And I had a lot of supports and I have jokingly said to some of his principals and educators, I have thanked them for helping me raise that child. I've also had the opportunity to work with many of the people here in the room tonight. I've worked with students from all walks of life, all socioeconomic backgrounds, and with lots of different goals for what comes after. I think it's important that we meet students where we are or where they are and that we help them get where they need to go without any preconceived ideas of what's the best fit for a child. My website is maliahuddle.org. And I hope with what you hear this evening, I'll be able to earn your vote either during early voting or on November 5.
For your first question. What should our school district be doing to ensure the safety of students and staff?
I believe in the last several years, our school system has taken a lot of positive steps. As my colleague said, the vestibules, the check-in process, being cleared to go into the building, one point of entry. But I believe there's more that we can do that we need to do in partnership with others. And I think a big part of that partnership, and I am a Moms Demand Action Gun Sense certified candidate, is having reasonable gun safety laws and looking at educating students better. It's not necessarily the school's job to educate students on firearm safety, but there are things like gun locks, secure storage of firearms, things that they're not happening at home. So if they're not happening at home, then that job does indeed get passed on to us. So we need to also continue to have top tip lines like Principal Joseph does at Oscar Smith. If something happens in the community, it comes to school. And Mr. Joseph has a tip line so that if things are going on, the students and the community know that they can reach out. And the number of things that have been averted before they can happen would truly boggle the public's mind. So I think we've done some good things. I think there's more that we can do. I think it takes a team effort and I think it also takes the, if you see something, say something. In all of the recent school shootings, someone has seen something that has been overlooked and that's the part we really need to do a better job on.
Your second question. What is your philosophy regarding the increased emphasis on testing to a standards-based curriculum?
Well, you hit one of my pet peeves. I truly believe that the only group out there that's benefiting from this standardized testing movement is Pearson. Pearson creates the books. Pearson creates the test. And Pearson reaps the benefits. Everyone in this room, or at least those of us who are of a certain age, all graduated prior to standardized testing and we went out into the world and became successful. No single test or subject matter test truly gives you an indication of what any child can do on any given day. One size does not fit all. And basing teacher evaluations or basing student performance and student progress solely on standardized testing is not, in my opinion, the way to go. I think we need to look at the concept of multiple assessments, that teachers need to have the freedom to teach their curriculum in a way that is developmentally appropriate to their children, not in a structured format that says, "On Monday, you have to be here and on Friday, you have to be here." And you need to figure out how you're going to get there. I don't think that serves the needs of children. So I think we need to give teachers more autonomy in building and shaping what goes on in their classrooms. And I believe that parents are our educational partners. And when things need to be reinforced at home, that we need them to do their jobs as well. And we need to maintain that partnership between the classroom, the home, the administration, and the child.
How important is it for you to have a trusting relationship with the superintendent? If important, how would you achieve this?
In my 29 years in Chesapeake, I had the good fortune to work under and with three different superintendents. I was hired under Dr. Bateman, and I worked under Dr. Roberts and Dr. Nichols. I also had the opportunity to serve as Chesapeake Education Association President under Dr. Nichols and Dr. Roberts. We had a very effective partnership as association leaders and superintendents. There was a dialogue, a regularly scheduled dialogue, that I am not sure is still happening today, and I would work very hard to see that is restored. But again, working with the superintendent, the school board, parents, teachers, we all have a role to play, and I think there should be open two-way communication that goes not only from the top down, but also from the bottom up, and that there needs to be multiple opportunities at all levels for input and for cooperation and for understanding.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to invite you for closing statements.
Thank you. Again, thank you to the women's division, thank you to my fellow candidates, to those folks who are watching at home and who showed up tonight to sort of support and cheer us on. Again, my website is maliahuddle.org. I ask you to take the time to do your homework, as every good teacher does. Check out all of the candidates, what we bring to the table, and also check out endorsements, the tickets that we're running with. It's a nonpartisan race. However, we all have the opportunity to share and put forth our ideas, as well as ideas that we share in conjunction with our chosen teammates for this election. I would ask for your vote, and I ask that you be aware of the early voting schedule, of things at the polls. If you see any voter intimidation, which I hope we won't see in Chesapeake, that you report it, and then we all work cooperatively to have a successful election in this city and a peaceful transition in our country as well. Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to invite Thomas L. Mercer, Sr., to the podium to select questions and for an opening statement.
Good evening, and a word of thanks, like all of the candidates, to the women's division and to my fellow candidates. I think we can probably give each other speeches by this time, but we are going to give our own, and my name is Tom Mercer. I've been on the Chesapeake School Board for 28 years, and you say, wow, why would anybody do that? I love Chesapeake. I love Chesapeake Public Schools. It's been, apart from being called to the ministry, the great calling in my life. And last election, we had six new school board members go on. They're fine people, have enjoyed working with them, and those of us who remained. But I also think that it's important to have someone that has a history. I wouldn't want a school board made up of 28 years of service by everyone, but I do think it's important to know the background, where we came from. Just the other night, we were discussing an issue, and we came, I shared with them the background of why we made this decision. And then I did something that turned some heads. I said, in spite of that, I think it's time to change, because after 28 years, I'm still one who wants to be innovative and wants to do what's right for the times in which we live while holding on to my cherished principles. If you go to the Indian River High School annual, you'll see it said that my ambition was to be superintendent of public schools. Well, I was called into the ministry, and this is one way, with my teaching degree, that I can give back to the education of all the children, of all the people of Chesapeake. And so I hope you'll consider re-electing me and letting me serve on the school board for four more years. Thank you.
Interestingly, Mr. Mercer, your first question is, in what ways have you been of service to public education prior to becoming a candidate in this election?
Well, I've been on the school board for 28 years. Most people, unless they looked at the bio on the school board site, don't know that I actually have a degree in education, in social studies, with teacher certification. In fact, I taught for a semester at Indian River High School, and if I had not been called into the ministry, I would probably be teaching, and hopefully, I might even be the superintendent now. But that was not to be. I've been in a multitude of positions on the school board in my 28 years. I've been the chair, several times I've been the vice chair, I've been the chair of CSEP, I've been the legislative representative to the Virginia School Board Association, and the list could go on. Most importantly, in each job that I take, I try to do what will help teachers, students, parents, administrators, all the Chesapeake Public School family, because that's what we are. And as we've grown, one of the things that this school board and past school boards have been able to do is to keep that family atmosphere. We don't have to, just because we've gone from being a smaller system to a larger system, forget that we're family and support one another.
Your second question, what specific strengths would you bring to the board table?
I've served next to two wonderful women that were not at the time of the same political party, and by the way, I'm running as an independent this time. But we've always looked at each other in times of crisis on the board, and we've said, okay, let's forget our party affiliations, and let's put our heads together, and let's do what's right for the children. And I've always been an independent voice that has first and foremost said, what is right for the children, what's right for public education in our city? And I think that's my strength, is I will try to work with almost anyone to find some common ground, while always keeping those principles that I hold and cherish. But we need to talk to one another, and unfortunately, in the world in which we live today, that's become an uncommon occurrence. We have made ourselves into divisions and different groups and different cliques and everything, and we need to cross barriers. And if there's one thing my faith says, it's that we're all God's children, and we all need to work together for the common good.
Given available funding, should school capital projects focus on new schools or building renovations?
We are growing this year, and with that comes additional opportunities. We have kept our schools in good shape, but we need additional funding to be able to keep the schools that we have in that good shape. Our schools are aging. Everybody talks about the new Great Bridge High School. That new Great Bridge High School is, I think, about 30 years old. It's not new, and the lifespan of a school is 50 years. And I always say, you go to Great Bridge Middle School, or you go to Crestwood Middle School, and you'll see fine structures there that have been kept up. You go to church, the old Churchland High School, which was the same floor plan, and it's been razed to the ground. And so you have to deal with the things that you have right now and make sure that they're okay for the future. You have to be wise stewards of those things that you have. Do we build new things? We need a new career center in the worst way, and we're doing everything we can do to advocate for the funding for that. But we also can't neglect the places that we have right now.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to invite you to do closing statements.
Thank you. Again, my name is Tom Mercer. I'm running for reelection to the school board. I've covet your vote. I ask you to give me one of your four votes. You have some fine candidates here, but I bring that wealth of experience. I think that I have something to share from our historical background, maybe it's because I was a social studies teacher, and I value history, because if we don't know our history, we are doomed to do it again. And so we need someone on the board who remembers where we came from, but also has a vision of where we can go. And I hope that I'm that person, and I hope you'll put your trust in me, and you'll give me your vote either in early voting or as we come together on that Tuesday to vote. Thank you very much.
At this time, I'd like to invite Norman G. Poole to the podium to select questions and for an opening statement.
Ready? All right. Good afternoon. Good evening, everybody. Y'all sound excited to be here. My name is Norman Poole. I am currently sitting on the school board, have been there since, my election was November of two years ago, and some of you were in the same room I'm in, or in the same position I was in, running for this, for office as well. I had a great speech prepared, but then I sat there and said to myself, well, that's dumb, don't say that. So what I'm going to say is a little different. In my two years of experience, we have fought many things. We have fought First Amendment rights, and we've made things work under that. We have fought an entire process of the governor's model policy, and we enacted that. We have fought to put more security in our schools by adding sheriff's officers and even more sheriff's officers to our schools. We have been very effective at making things happen. We have a great team. We work hard, you know, and I would not want to work for any other team other than the school board of Chesapeake, because we have phenomenal staff, phenomenal people, we have the best teachers in America, we have the best janitorial, custodial staff, we have the best bus drivers. There is no system better than ours, and I think that it's because we have a phenomenal school board, and we have a phenomenal group of people leading us, such as Dr. Cotton and his team, and we are making a difference in this city, and this is why, when you vote this year, whether it's today, not today, it's too late, tomorrow, or anytime this week, you vote for a team that means business. You vote for Dan, you vote for Elijah, you vote for Norman Poole, and you vote for Angie Swaggart, who happens to be our chair, because we are a team that wants to continue making things happen, and we can only do it if we have that team. Thank you. This man, don't make it hard.
What is the best way to address differences of opinions on the board or between the board and the administration?
I actually love that question, okay? Because we, we on the board, kind of all have the same ideologies about what we do, how we do it, okay? We have some of the same faith-based people on the board, but we do not always agree. Can you imagine? We're family. And if you have a family, you're never going to always be on the same side. Like, I have a brother and sister that, they look at me and they go, you're doing what? But at the same time, we understand that since we're family, we find ways to put things together to make things work. If we do that effectively, our children, our parents, our staff win. When we get behind the scenes, sometimes we're like, oh, right? But when we come outside those scenes, we're, we are a family, we mean business, and we're going to make things happen.
Your second question, how do you intend to best communicate with the public?
Wow, that's a good, these are my favorite questions. So I think one is doing things like, you know, Facebook, doing things like social media. I mean, there are a ton of avenues that we can reach people out in the community and bring them in. Look, I mean, you can put together Zoom calls for families to come and be on, to be collective and understand what's going on. There's, there's just so many ways we can do that, that make it effective so that everybody's on the same page and we can all learn from it.
How do you view the board's role versus the administration's role in running the school division?
I'm glad you asked. Thank you. It is my opinion that we on the school board are the guardians of the galaxy. We're the gatekeepers. We allow what's good to come in, and we want to get everything that's bad out. That's what good school board members do. And we also work very effectively with our administration and our superintendent. You know, Dr. Cotton's a great guy. When I first met him, I was sitting in the audience, and someone said, I bet you're a FOC. And I thought, what the heck, it's an FOC. I looked it up on Google, but what I found out what that meant was, you're a friend of Cotton, okay? All right? And that's important, because if you're a friend and a family member of the team that you're leading, they're going to follow you. Like, I have a lot of employees, and they're my family. I treat them like family. When they have a bad day, I have a bad day. When they have a good day, we all have a good day. When they have a family emergency, I have a family emergency, and I intend to always stand in the gap for them, is I will always stand in the gap for our team, our staff, and all those who are associated to make our great city work.
At this time, I'd like to invite you for closing statements.
Thank you. All right, so, like I said, my name is Norman Poole, and I am a firm believer that the number one reason I ever got to this position was because that's where God wanted me. And when you follow where He wants you to be, and you do what He wants you to do, He always blesses you, and He puts you in places where you can change lives. Look, what I didn't tell you was, I was a paramedic at Norfolk for 20 years, I was a chief hospital informant in the Navy, and I own a business that teaches people how to save lives. What I do every day makes a difference in someone's life, and what I bring to this board and to this ability of the school, this system, is an ability to change lives. We have children who can go to college, great, I love that. We have children who build careers, like I did. I joined the Navy at 17, saw the world, wound up here, okay? All right? You can do that, or you can, you can become anybody thing you want, if you really try. Join the Navy, go to college, get a career, make a difference. The children that we have in our schools today are our replacements. Look around the room. Some of you are older than me, okay? These are our replacements, and if we are able to teach them effectively, make their lives functional, and teach them to critically think, we win, because they win. My name is Norman Poole, and I hope you will go out and vote for Ms. Angie Swaggart, Daniel, Elijah, and Norman Poole, because we are the coolest people in this town, ready to be elected to vote. Thank you very much.
At this time, I'd like to invite L. Jamil Shaheer to select questions and come to the podium for an opening statement.
Thank you to the women's division for putting this on. Ms. Lisa, my email said there would be snacks. I'm Jamil Shaheer, I'm a candidate for Chesapeake Public School Board. I'm a former educator, firefighter, accountant, small business owner, landlord, Air Force veteran, paramedic, community advocate, member of Phi Beta Sigma Fraternity Incorporated, member of NAACP. As of December, I think it will be my last month, I'm a member of the New Orleans Regional Black Chamber of Commerce. I'm an Urban League Guild member, but of all those titles, the one that I'm most proud of is that I'm a father of seven. I have five girls and two boys, and one granddaughter, who asks a million questions, and she actually wrote on my speech, so I had to change it up a little bit, but they light up my life. And public school education has always been number one in my house. My mother was a preschool four teacher, so we always had to do our homework before we got to watch Scooby Doo, before we got to watch Johnny Quest, before we got to watch Speed Racer, and it all had to be right, because she checked it. She definitely checked it. And that is, that is the household that I grew my children up in. But of all those titles, the one that I'm most proud of is that I'm a father of seven. I have five girls and two boys and one granddaughter who asked a million questions. And she actually wrote on my speech, so I had to change it up a little bit. But they light up my life. And public school education has always been number one in my house. My mother was a preschool four teacher. So we always had to do our homework before we got to watch Scooby Doo, before we got to watch Johnny Quest, before we got to watch Speed Racer. And it all had to be right because she checked it. She definitely checked it. And that is, that is the household that I grew my children up in. A household where public education was always first. Among my seven children, we have seven degrees. And because we had a plan, we didn't pay for any of them. My name is L. Jamil Shaheer. I'm a candidate for school board. I humbly ask for your prayers, your support and your vote either tomorrow or as we get closer to November the 5th. Thank you.
Your first question. What are your best hopes for the future of this school district? How would your aspirations help our students?
My best hope is that every child will get everything that they can get from the public school system, whether it's moving on to college, whether it's becoming an entrepreneur, whether it's assessing a trade, whether it's in going into the military, that they receive everything that they can from the system. And I hope that my talents, my experience, my resume will make that happen. By degrees, I'm an accountant. So I want to make sure that I take a look, a deep dive into the budget to make sure that every dollar is spent where it's supposed to go. If we can cut, let's cut. If we can pivot, let's pivot. If we can increase, let's increase. I'm actually working with two corporations right now to bring a Hampton Roads-wide fundraiser into the city that will bring between three and $5 million directly into the school system, which we can use for retention, recruitment, bonuses, for renovating some of those buildings, hopefully building new buildings. So, yes.
Your second question. Legislation establishes state policy. To what extent would you like to be involved in legislative activity?
As a school board member, I'm, I'm just the representative for the voice of the people. How we would handle legislation, I'm a former educator. I'm not in the classroom today and I wasn't in the classroom yesterday. It's been 20 years since I've been in the classroom. So the first things that I would do is form a forum, a town hall meeting to bring together teachers, school nutrition workers, janitors, bus drivers, so that when we, when, when I go to them with a plan to say, this is what our people want. My grandfather told me a long time ago, you can't have a plan for the people without the people. So any legislation that we have would definitely involve the people.
How do you believe a school board member can be most effective in making long-lasting, substantial, positive changes for students?
Sometimes you have to think outside the box. We can't wait for the federal government to give us more funding. We can't wait for the state to give us more funding. We can't wait for the city to give us more funding. Sometimes we have to go out and, and create those opportunities. Again, I said, I'm, I'm already working with some companies to bring money directly into the school system. I'm actually working with the police chief and the super, and the fire superintendent to increase the amount of positions that they have for those kids who are coming out of high school into, that want to go into the police department. I think right now they have about four or five positions. I'm trying to increase it to about at least 12. I'm actually working with the Hampton Roads Workforce Commission to give more money to the Hampton Roads area, especially Chesapeake, for more OJT and internships for kids who may not be going to college. I have a program, it's called Operation Liftoff, that raises money to help children with their application fees or their, any of the fees that they have outside of their regular tuition and, and books. So Operation Liftoff. So we, sometime we just going to have to think outside of the box and start waiting for someone else to help us out, for someone else to give us something. So we have to kind of pull up our own bootstraps and, and take care of those things ourself.
At this time, I'd like to invite you for any closing remarks.
I'm Jamil Shaheer, candidate for school board. Thank you guys for being here. Hopefully next time there'll be snacks. Thanks, everybody, for, for showing up. Being a member on a school board is a very important position because I think as someone mentioned earlier, the P, the kids that are being educated in our system are our replacements. They'll be standing here in a few years. They'll be sitting in those seats in a few years. They'll be sitting in Ms. Dixon's seat in a few years. And we look forward to that. We look forward to that. I look forward to it. And I will do everything that I can to make sure that those things happen, to make sure that they're filling those seats with pride and, and all types of comprehension. I'm Jamil Shaheer, first in your heart and I'm the very last name on the ballot. Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to invite Daniel A. Stoller to select questions and come to the podium for an opening statement.
Ooh, there's not much room up here. I've never been on this side before. Just for luck, just for luck, I'm going to throw that one back in there. That's probably the one I wanted. First, thank you, Women's Division, for having us all speak our platforms. I am Daniel Stoller. And though I may be a new face, I'm deeply rooted with the city of Chesapeake. I've been a resident for 28 years from a family of educators. Both my brothers and my sisters and their spouses are educators, including my daughter, which is a Chesapeake Public School graduate and ODU graduate and now teaches English. My son's a sophomore in Chesapeake Public Schools. He's a part of the football program and ROTC. I've been an orchestra dad, drama club dad, ROTC dad, Bay Youth Orchestra dad. So I've, I've done some volunteering in our schools and I've been around them for quite some time in, in those programs. After serving in the Navy, I retired with the Chesapeake Sheriff's Office. And among many assignments, I supervised the Juvenile Domestic Relations Court Building. And in my retirement now, I devised the, or I helped manage the security for the Norfolk and Newport News Federal Courthouse Buildings. I hold a bachelor's degree in criminal justice and a master's degree in executive leadership, blending practical experience with an education to serve our family with proudly on our school board. My top priority is school safety. I know firsthand that complacency, it can lead to failure. So I'll work consistently to continue to evolve these, these security methods and improve our security methods, improve our mental health resources, enforce a zero tolerance policy on bullying and no child should feel unsafe in our schools. I'll support competitive pay, benefits and compression pay to attract, pay to attract and dedicate, to our dedicated teachers, staff and bus drivers. And I'm committed to listening to their voices because they deserve to be valued. And when you hear their voices and you hear that they're valued, you improve their morale. And their morale is very crucial for our children's success. I'm a God-fearing father. I'm a God-fearing father. That's, I'm a God-fearing father.
And your first question?
Yes, ma'am.
Career and technical education provide students with technical training to prepare for a successful career. Will you work with Dr. Cotton and other members of the school board to make it a priority? And if so, how?
Absolutely. First, we need to know where we've been to where we need to go. We need to have a vision and we need to give these kids a vision for that. And we need to know how to have a plan to do that. So yes, absolutely, that needs to be a collaborative plan to excel on that because these careers are going to, once they graduate high school, they're in the workforce. They're going to college, they're going into military. So to, in order to do that, you have to have a comprehensive plan. And I believe through our Career Center, we can make that happen. So yes, absolutely.
Your second question. How can a school board know if its goals are being accomplished and its policies are being implemented?
Thank you for that question. It's, it's, it's project management. When there's, when we, when the school board integrates a policy, you need to follow up on it and see where, if there's any weaknesses, any failures, any strengths that we need to do. We need to find out what the strengths and weaknesses are. And you need to have an open communication with the superintendent, with the principals. We need to visit schools. We need to hear from the trenches, from the teachers and the staff as well. We need to get firsthand experience on, or information on how those policies are being done and if there's any gaps and, and follow through with the progress of any policy that we put in. Thank you.
How would you handle being approached by a reporter for an interview about a controversial issue or something that the board has not yet taken action on?
No comment. Thank you. I'm Daniel Stoller. Actually, I would not really answer any questions like that without collaborating with the rest of the school board. And, you know, I, I don't think I'd be answering any of those questions without giving a comprehensive answer.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to invite you for closing statements.
Yes, ma'am. So I just want to close with this. I commend the, the candidates for running tonight that, that actually run for school board because from my perspective, the school board is one of the most important elections. It's not only the future of our students, it's all of our future that's at stake. And it's, it's the outcome of our actions is what impacts the future, our future, the students' future. So that said, I'm running on morals and values and most importantly, common sense values. So school safety is my number one priority. I really strive for parental rights and I want them to have a voice and them to feel valued and them to feel confident, more than valued, them to feel confident in the decisions that we make. Support our teachers and staff that will shape our children's future. So this is more than just policy and budgeting to me. It's, it's about building a community of families that move to Chesapeake to raise their children and to educate their children. And they, they came to Chesapeake and I realize the value that people, families move to Chesapeake for the education and I want to support that and make it even better. We're ranked 13th out of 130 schools right now. And I think that's great and we can always keep that bar high and keep going. So I'm proud to serve our families that move here to Chesapeake to educate their kids. And I'm going to be proud to support those families on the school board. I'm Daniel Stoller, running for school board and I humbly ask your vote. Thank you very much for your time. Thank you, Women's Division. I got 15 seconds. I got 15 seconds. Can I keep on talking? No, I, I can finish my first speech. No? All right.
At this time, I'd like to invite Angie B. Swaggart to select questions and come to the podium for opening statements.
Good evening and thank you to the Women's Division for hosting us tonight. My name is Angie Swaggart and I've had the honor of serving on the Chesapeake School Board since 2020 and as chair for the last two years. I'm a proud product of Chesapeake Public Schools, born and raised in Deep Creek, and I remain actively engaged in our schools as my son is a junior in CPS and my daughter's a recent 2024 graduate. In the last few years, we have navigated some of the most challenging times that I believe any school board has faced. And I am committed to facing any continuing challenges and opportunities, thoughtfully, strategically, prayerfully, and with an eye keenly focused on what is in the very best interest, both short-term and long-term for our students and staff. We have, as a school board, continued to provide challenging and engaging curriculum opportunities for all of our students, all 40,000 of them, to reach their unique potential. For some, that means rigorous coursework that prepares them for the transition to college. For others, that means preparation to enter the military. And for many, that means high-quality training and licensure that prepares them to enter the modern workforce right upon graduation at age 18. I'm a staunch advocate for the advancement of our Career Center to a state-of-the-art, high-quality training facility, and we're on our way to that. The safety in our, of our staff and students is paramount and we can't do anything else as long as they don't, if they don't have a safe learning environment. And it's imperative that we stay ahead of the evolving security challenges that we face. It's also critical that we provide high-quality, competitive compensation and benefits for our, our staff and our educators so that we are able to attract, attack, attract and retain the very best and the brightest in our field. I am committed to fighting for that. And I am also committed that we can't do anything as long, if we don't make sure that we have strong partnerships with our families and our parents. As long as I'm on the board, they will have a seat at the table and will always have visibility and involvement in their children's education. Thank you.
Your first question. What can be done to improve student achievement and ensure everyone who graduates is life-ready?
That's a great question and gosh, a loaded one. There are a lot of things that we can do. I'll give you just a couple of quick examples as far as the getting them ready part. We are always exploring innovative opportunities to make sure that we are reaching every kid where they are. An example of that is the new Modern Classroom Project, which is something that has been launched in the last couple of years and is continuing to expand particularly in our middle schools, which frees up the teachers to be able to create curriculum and create their lessons in a way that the students are able to go at their own pace and they don't move on until they have achieved mastery. This enables the teachers to meet the children where they are and ensure that they are really grasping the material and not moving on until they're ready. And we are seeing amazing results in this. The achievement scores are growing exponentially and it's exciting. And we're continuing to look for opportunities like that so that our teachers are equipped to better do their job. We also look for, as I mentioned in my opening, opportunities to make sure that every unique pathway is something that is prepared for and equipped, whether that be high-quality, rigorous training through our academies, our IB program, AP classes if we're training kids to go to college, but also if they want to go to, into a, straight into a trade or career. A lot of people don't realize the level of amazing programs that are available at our Career Center. Many people have never heard of Mechatronics or the cybersecurity program that we offer. You know, HVAC is certainly still growing and thriving. There are so many things. We've just recently added criminal justice as a pathway through our Career Center. There are so many exciting things that are happening that are giving us more and more opportunities to make sure that each one of our children has their unique needs met and it's something that we continue to focus on.
Your second question is somewhat related to just what you've spoken of. What are your concerns in the areas regarding student achievement in our school division?
I'll mention two. The first is, you know, we certainly have noticed, and this is a nationwide issue. It's not just isolated to Chesapeake, but Chesapeake is seeing it as well, that we could be seeing better growth and progress rebounding from COVID in our science performance. With, especially when coming out of the curric, the, the shutdowns of COVID, there was an exponentially higher focus on math and literacy because there, there were so many gains that needed to be made there. And we had to make sure that we, before anything else, were keeping our pace with where we needed to be in those. And science suffered a little bit in that. We were putting, we've hired new staff and new coordinators in the administration to re-tackle those issues and make sure that we are catching up. It's an important area and it's one that we're addressing. And another area that I'd like to see some increased focus is our special education population. I think there are growth and improvements that we can do to make sure that they are being served at an even higher level than they are now.
If elected, what would you hope would be the key accomplishments of the board during your years of service?
Gosh, there are so many. It's, it's really hard to narrow that, but if I had to pick just a few, again, I think, as we all know, there, nothing happens and children and teachers neither can focus if they don't feel safe. And we continue to focus our efforts at improving and expanding our relationships with the Chesapeake sheriffs and the police department and our school safety task force to make sure we're staying ahead of those. And I think it's important that we lead in that, that we are never, not, are not only reactive but proactive and that we are constantly making sure that we're staying ahead of those challenges. Another area, again, that I'm very proud and hope that we continue to expand is on making sure that we have multiple pathways, no matter what. We have 40,000 children in our school and 40,000 different, unique pathways to get to their future. And making sure that we are finding ways to address all of those is something that I'm proud of and I think that we can continue to grow there. I, I just think there's a lot of opportunity to continue to provide for our teachers. They're under a tremendous amount of strain. And knowing that we can continue to do more to alleviate that strain, we'll never be able to pay them everything that they deserve, but we can continue to work on their work environment. And being able to provide that for them is something that is... And being able to provide that for them is something that is, is a high priority for me as well.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to invite you for closing statements.
Thank you. When my children were younger, I often served as the room mom in their classrooms. When my son was a little bit older, I served several times as team mom on his rec league football team. When I first ran for the school board more, nearly five years ago, I looked at the role as the ultimate team mom for 40,000 students. It's a tremendous responsibility, and I believe that it is my role to provide the support and the commitment to our administrators, our teachers, and our staff so that they are able to coach and prepare these kids for the battlefield of life. It's a responsibility that I take very seriously. During the last few years, I have been very pleased to support many successes and advancements in our schools, and I'd like to give you just a couple of snapshots into those. We have expanded our safety and security measures, increasing our partnerships with the sheriffs and the police department. We have provided additional raises and bonuses to our staff and our teachers and working to address the shortages that are facing us in schools across the nation. We've also implemented new expansion of our academy programs so that more students have access to their specialized areas of interest, including, you know, the Science and Medicine Academy and the STEM programs, and even more opportunities within the IB program. We are currently developing our first computer sciences lab school, which is bringing exciting new opportunities in a very competitive field to Oscar Smith Middle School, and that program will begin at the beginning of next school year. These are just really exciting new opportunities that we're advancing. We added baseball and soccer to our middle school sports this year, or actually it was last year, and that is something that is very exciting because that's an opportunity at an earlier age to engage students. And for many, that's what keeps them engaged in school itself, and these opportunities are something that are just creative ways we can continue to make sure that our students are being engaged. And I also want to say, we were first in the state to become 100% Purple Star certified with every single one of our schools being recognized as friendly and supportive to our military-connected students and families, and I think that's critical. Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to invite Rue M. Willis to select questions and come to the podium for an opening statement.
All right. Good evening. Thank you to the Women's Division of the Chamber of Commerce and everyone watching from home and everyone spectating. My name is Rue Willis, and I am honored to stand before you as a candidate for Chesapeake School Board. I'm a 2019 school graduate, or public school graduate. I am a current educator within our Chesapeake Public School System as a long-term substitute at, sorry, Western Branch Primary School where I am teaching a first-grade class. And as, okay, as an educator, I understand the problems that we are currently having within our school system. I understand how our students are struggling within the classroom because right now, the curriculum, especially for first graders, is all based on a textbook. You have to be reading out of a textbook. It's called Wonders, and you're reading out of it, and it feels like, to the teachers at least, that they're going underneath so much stress because they cannot have their own voice within their classroom because they're stuck so much on a timer that sits on a wall than making sure that the children are actually able to learn. Because right now, I, even though I came in so late, I see that our, that our current students right now, they are tack, or they are currently trying to build up from the pandemic, especially even, I haven't even seen it in our first graders where they don't have the social interactions that they need to be having because they're so stuck on arithmetic and they're so stuck on learning how to read and write that they can't figure out how to have the critical, the essential critical thinking skills that they need to succeed in life. Thank you.
Your first question. What particular skills or experiences qualify you to serve as a school board member?
Of course. So I will start back from in 2019, yeah, 2018, 2019, where during my senior year in high school, I was a teacher assistant for a second-grade classroom over in Newport News. It was right behind where my high school was, Woodside High School, where I was helping throughout instruction, as well as, as soon as I got my 30 credits, I ended up becoming a substitute teacher. So I've been a substitute teacher for just over five years. So that's my credentials, as well as understanding what, how our students are currently feeling within, or, sorry, our current educators are feeling within our school system.
Your second question. How do you plan to recruit and retain the best teachers now and into the future?
Of course. So one of the things that I want to bring as, if I am elected as school board member, is making sure that we are bringing stipends to our teacher assistants and to our substitutes to make them credentialed to start teaching. Because right now, that is where, we have a lot of substitute teachers that want to go into teaching, that they don't, they don't want to spend their hard-earned money to become a teacher just because they don't feel like they're getting the support that they need. Not only that, but also building our connections with our local Chesapeake Education Association to make sure that our teachers are able to be heard within, within the school board, even if it's just making it to where they have a specific, what is it called? Even if it's only having it to where they have a specific caucus that they can speak to the school board members, having a representative be there, that would make it to where it's so essential because it's not just making sure that we can recruit our educators, it's making sure that we can recruit our support staff. Because we, as everyone know, we're having a, we're having shortages in, in our support staff, janitors, bus drivers, et cetera. Thank you.
In the development of a school district budget, what goals and objectives would you guy, would guide your decision-making?
Of course. So one of the things that I would be focused on is making sure that our school safety is a priority. So one of the things that, when looking at the budget, I want to make sure that we are able to, one, bring in teachers. That's, that's my major priority. However, making sure that we are phasing away from portables and making sure that we can find a way in our budget to make the necessary expansions to our schools because I work, like I said, I'm over at Western Branch Primary, and we have portables that are not safe for our students. If there, if there is, unfortunately, and, and a threat that were to come onto our school, those children would not be safe because it, it would take them approximately three to five minutes to enter the school building after being able to punch in the, the, the gate code into the doors.
All right. At this time, I'd like to invite you for closing remarks.
Of course. So as a current educator, or y'all already know that I am a current educator. However, some of the things that I strongly stand for is making sure that we're tackling our pandemic-era learning loss by bringing in-person and in-online tutoring services to our students because of how our students, like I said, they're struggling. And this is the only way to be able to tackle that socioeconomic disparity within our schools. Another thing is retaining and recruiting our educators and support staff. Like I advised, making it to where we're focusing on bringing the Chesapeake Education Association into the mix, making sure that our teachers have a say on their working conditions, on their pay, as well as enhancing current mental health resources to our teachers and students. Because we all know, we are, ever since, even before, prior to the pandemic, our students have been suffering a mental health crisis. I lost five of my friends when I was in high school to mental health. So I understand on a personal level how bad it is that our students are not able to come to school and receive the counseling that they need right now because they feel like they can't speak to anyone. You can find out more information about my other platforms and reach out to me at Rue, or RueWillis.com, and my email is Rue@RueWillis.com. Thank you so much.
I'd like to thank all of our candidates this evening. Please, we ask that all the candidates please remain for a picture after the conclusion of this session. This concludes the forum for the candidates for Chesapeake School Board. Video replays of tonight's forum will be available online later this week with the links from the Women's Division and the city's Facebook pages. Video replays will also be shown periodically until Election Day on Chesapeake Television, Cox Cable 48 and Verizon FiOS 43. A separate forum for candidates for mayor and the city council candidates was conducted on September 30th with replay videos airing on those same outlets. On behalf of the Women's Division of Hampton Roads Chamber of Commerce, Chesapeake, thank you for watching. Please remember to vote on Election Day, November 5th, or take advantage of our early voting locations, which are now available. Details can be found at thecityofchesapeake.net. Thank you and have a good evening.